Motion carries, five in favor, none against. How the minutes of the May 2nd, 2016 special meeting and the May 4th, 2016 regular meeting? In your packet, is there any changes, corrections, clarifications? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve both sets of minutes as presented?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dave, second by Diane. Any other last minute questions? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, five in favor, none against. Now is our public open forum, is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Seeing no one, our public open forum is now closed. We have no public hearings. Then takes us into our reports and presentations, annual audit report. Mary?
Thank you for having me tonight. Prior to this, I did meet with the finance committee and we went over all of the audit results. So we're gonna go ahead and just start on page seven of the PowerPoint that I handed out. And I'll just go through briefly some items within there. And then if you have questions, feel free to stop me at any time. I'm used to getting interrupted and we can have a dialogue if you would like. And then once I get done, if you have any additional questions or wanna open up the financials or whatever, just let me know. So we'll start on page seven, the city's audit results. An unmodified opinion on the financial statements, meaning a clean report. Compliance, there were two material weaknesses, same from prior year. The controls over financial reporting, so we go ahead and prepare the financial statements that are presented in front of the council. And then segregation of duties, just not quite enough office staff to spread all of those accounting functions and finance functions. But like I said, both of those were there last year. Minnesota leave compliance, we test seven areas and there were no findings this year, so very good and clean audit that way. So page eight, you show some cash and investment balances, so the first one is general fund, went up slightly and then all other governmental funds are kinda just combined. That went up significantly, but you have to back out a little bit over 2 million, which is being held in escrow, which was being in held escrow at the end of the year to make the final payment on the refund bonds. So page nine, takes us to the fund balances. And you can see the general fund had a slight increase as well. And then the overall governmental funds had increases as well. And then the city has approximately five months of expenditures in unassigned fund balance, so unassigned fund balance right now is approximately 1.1 million. And the OSA, Office of the State Auditor recommends no less than between five and six months. The city does receive tax payments in May and June, and that's a lot of their cash flow. So the city needs to fund operations from January till then. So that's why the five to six months comes in. Page 10. This is comparative governmental revenues, and you can see it in the graph and it goes from 2015 is in red, and then it goes all the way to 2011. Tax increments, four of those were actually closed last year, so you wouldn't be expected to collect revenues in those funds, which is why it went down. Intergovernmental revenues, grants went up from last year. And then charges for services and other revenues is where the hospital money comes in, where the state surcharge comes in from the hospital. And then the other revenues is the interest income that comes. So page 11, and it just puts it into a pie chart. It's a different way of showing it. And on the left is 2015 and on the right is 2014. So it's gonna be a little bit different than last year, just with the tax increments and the shift that happened there. Otherwise, everything is fairly consistent. So page 12, then shows the expenditures for those same funds and where's the money going Public safety also includes the hospital payment going out, where it collects the money coming in under charges for services. Debt service accounted for some additional hospital interest related to bonds in 2014. And then capital outlay increased significantly this year due to the Beltline project that was started. That was approximately 1.6 million in there. So then page 13 gives you the pie chart again. And your significant variances are gonna be between debt service and capital outlay. Page 14 then. The state auditor does require a reporting form be submitted along with the financial statements, and that should be submitted early next week, and that'll be well ahead of the June 30th deadline. The hospital special revenue fund decreased by approximately 235,000, and this had to do with just transferring money to the debt service fund. So it's kind of a wash, the debt service fund went up and then the hospital special revenue fund went down. The hospital special revenue fund received 612,000, and that's in the charges for services. And then the expenditures, approximately 540,000, and that goes into public safety. So the city right now is collecting enough to meet that state surcharge amount. And then the hospital special revenue fund received approximately 369,000 of interest from the working capital loan. And some of that 369 is accrued interest as well that was paid to the city. And the working capital loan is approximately 6.7 million right now to the hospital. So they are just making interest payments to the city at this point. Page 15, we talked about the capital outlay increasing due to the Beltline project, and there was debt issued to help fund that project. The tax increment financing fund had an increase of about 480,000 in land held for resale from the prior year. General fund had a slight increase in fund balance from the prior year, and actually did about $80,000 better than what was budgeted. Three new capital projects funds were set up, the Beltline project, the airport CIP runway was set up as a separate fund, and then the Oak Street project was set up as a separate fund as well. This will allow the city to track those expenditures, see how much the project came in, if it came in within budget, and how the revenues coming in also play into that. And then we talked about the debt service fund having an increase of the 2.7 million, but that goes away in February once the bond payments have been made. So that was a fairly quick overview of the audit for this year. I didn't know if there are any additional questions?
Questions, comments? As she stated, Heidi and I are on the finance committee and we had met with Mary and Vicky and went reviewed this more in depth. Basically, there's no red flags that the auditor seen that we should be keeping an eye on or anything, and everything looked good, so if anyone else has any questions or comments, then thank you, Mary.
Okay, thank you.
Police department monthly report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Activity report for April 2016. Some of the numbers we had, we had 10 alarm calls, we did 20 assists for other agencies, we had 27 citizen contacts, we had one arrest for a controlled substance, we had 10 dog complaints, we had six arrests for a small amount of marijuana. We had six intoxicated person calls, seven juvenile problems, 17 matter of informations, 15 medicals, 10 school patrols, we did 19, we had 19 suspicious calls, we had seven And we did 300, or we gave out 302 verbal warnings, we had a total activity for the month of 352. So compare that to March, we were down on calls by two, up by warnings 18, total up by 16, so very close to March. And compared to 2015, we're up 31 calls from 2015, we're gave seven less warnings, and we're up 24. So pretty similar to the last couple of years and last month. Also in April, I went to the, we had this Minnesota Sterns, Minnesota Chiefs of Police Conference, which was held in St. Cloud. Very informative conference this year, where they had some really good speakers that were very interesting to listen to. I'll just kinda go through them here in the book. We first had a gentleman by the name of Philip Goff, who talked about bias in the workplace and in the public, very good speaker, made a subject pretty interesting, so learned a lot from him. And then we had Lori Robinson, who talked about strengthening law enforcement officers in the community that they serve and with their public, and talked about the task force, the presidential task force, the final report that identifies the six pillars that strength police in the community and the community relations with our, with our community. So that was pretty interesting. Then we also had a speaker by the name of Chief Flynn, who was from the Milwaukee Police Department. He gave a real good perception on the use of deadly force, which our department has had several, and really put some perspective on that and gave good accounts of what to expect when that happens and how to deal with it. So that was very interesting, coming from a big department and how they deal with that. Then we had a speaker by the name of Chuck Wexler, who talked about the use of force that is being used with more mentally ill public out there. The perspective that, you know, that is being used by law enforcement on mentally, people with mental health issues and how to deal with them maybe, and looking at a different perspective on how to deal with them. And so that was very interesting and opened some eyes about how we need to address that issue and also about trying to get other entities of the government to work with our, with that bracket of the community, you know, to social services and such. So that was very interesting. Excuse me. And we had a speaker, Chief Michael Colville, from Madison, Wisconsin Police Department. He talked about the building strategies for community relationships and then how to use that to your advantage and talking to the different nationalities in the community and how to deal with that, and gave a good perspective of that also, so that was very good. And the very good speaker came John Belmar from St. Louis County Police Department in Missouri, who dealt with all the aftermath of the Michael Brown death in Ferguson. Very good, very interesting on his department's perspective on how to deal with all the riotings and everything that happened, and give us a different perspective on a smaller scale probably. And so that was very interesting to listen to. Otherwise, there's a lot of good exhibitors there to go around and look through and get a lot of ideas on future equipment and stuff, and so. And we had a lot of other little breakout classes that were interesting, and a lot of them this year directed more towards smaller departments like ours, and so that was very helpful, so. Yeah, otherwise, that's all I have.
Good. Any questions for Brian or comments?
Is there any, got a few ideas about what you wanna change in the department now coming from there?
Not that so much has changed, but just things to, you know, look ahead to, to make it run a little better.
Okay.
Yep.
Good. All right, thank you, Brian.
So the planning commission met on Tuesday, May 10th, for their regular session. I did put a copy of their agenda in your packet. Also along with that, the March and April monthly building report and zoning permit summaries, so you can see kinda where we're at for issuing permits so far for the year. They do have one item, that's an agenda item for you later. They discussed going out for, to develop a request for proposals for updating the comprehensive plan, so that's an action item that you have later on the agenda. They did receive a public hearing notice for Sterns County for the moratorium on solar farms, but Sterns County rolled that back, so I don't believe that public hearing is going to occur. And there are some educational events for land use education, and the planning commission is invited to attend those sessions, but the city council is also invited to attend. So if any of the city council members are interested in obtaining or to go into some of those classes, they're quite educational, on variances, conditional use permits, planning commissions, comprehensive plans and that type of thing. And then they just got a little bit of an update of the different pending city development projects and what the planning commission's role will be in those. So if anybody has any questions on anything that occurred at the planning commission, I can answer them, or Heidi can answer them.
Questions, comments? Okay, thank you. Airport Board report?
The airport board met on Wednesday, May 11th, it was their regular session. They did review the warranty issues for the pump at the airport, there was a failed belt, and so that was repaired, but also they're still looking at, the pump doesn't pump at the capacity that some of them would like to see, and so we're still working on that. And they did review and they are gonna recommend approval of the plans for the airport improvement project, which is tonight on your agenda, and also review and recommend the advertisement for bids for the project. So you'll have that, and you did receive the plans and specs ahead of time, and Silas is here from Bolton Mank to talk about that when we get to that section. And that's what I have for the airport board, if anybody has questions on that.
I guess you can go right into Finance Committee report?
Finance Committee. Finance Committee met today at 5:10. That committee includes Mayor Stone and Councilmember Heidi Leach. They do have a couple items, the first thing, of course, is they reviewed the 2015 audit report in more detail than you were given tonight, so if you have any additional questions, you can ask them or come to myself for those questions. They also discussed the purchase of the fire truck and how that would be funded, and we do have a recommendation of the finance committee for that purchase when we get to that item, agenda item on the council, or on the agenda. And the third item is we did some brief discussion on funding opportunities for the future Highway 71 reconstruct. And there's various ways, including property tax, special assessment, water and sewer rates, but one thing that the finance committee is recommending we investigate is perhaps the use of a local option sales tax dedicated for that purpose. And so I just wanted to let the council know that that's something that we are researching, and of course, we'll bring more information to you before we would pursue that, because this would involve a ballot question on the general election, so just something to think about. That's Finance Committee report.
Questions, comments? Okay, thank you. Move on to our action items, accept the 2016 annual audit report?
This is the formal action for what Mary Reedy presented earlier this evening, it's the final step in the 2015 audit, would be for the city council to formally accept the 2015 audited financial statements as presented.
Questions, comments? Otherwise, do I have a motion to accept the 2015 audited financial statements as presented?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second? I'll second that. Second by Keith. Any other questions or comments? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven B, approved resolution 2016-37 approving plans and authorizing bids airport.
I'll briefly explain it a little bit, but Silas from Bolton Mank is here, he's prepared the specifications and the bidding documents for the airport redevelopment. I did provide you those plans and specs ahead of time with the packet for your review. As a general overview, it's a runway redevelopment, including widening, addition of turnarounds, apron and taxiway redevelopment, beacon and wind cone replacement, new electrical vault, new runway lighting, including PAPs and rails, which are precision approach lighting and runway and lighting, people were wondering what those acronyms were. And there, you did have in your packet, from the airport commission, kind of an overview, and I'd like to invite Silas up here to kinda walk you through that, because the airport commission has been detailed involved in this, but the council hasn't been so much, so we wanted to bring you up to speed a little bit more on that, if you could do that, Silas.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council, for the time here. So Vicky kinda gave an overview of what the project is there at the airport. Essentially, what you're looking to do is reconstruct the entire airport, it's a major, you know, reconstruction effort there. I know the city has done a lot of work over the past number of years to get this project on board for this year, you know, as coordinating with MINDOT and the FAA. So what the project involves is reconstruction and widening the runway. Currently, the runway is 60 feet wide, which is a little narrow for pilots coming in and out of the airport here, considering the number of users you have based there and then the number of other aircraft from around the community that come in and fly here, it's a little tight at times, so widening out to 75 feet is gonna provide a safer environment for the local pilots and anybody else that's coming in here. Another part that'll be constructed is runway turnarounds, they are exactly like they sound. Without a parallel taxiway here at the airport, what aircraft do is they go out there and they just turn on the runway. The FAA doesn't really like maneuvers like that, because it's kind of unsafe, because when you're turning, you obviously can't see what's going on behind you, and being aircraft or coming from up top, you might not see it. So having turnarounds on both ends of the runway, what that allows is an aircraft to go down to the end, make a safe turnaround maneuver, and be ready for takeoff. So it's, again, it's gonna enhance the safety of operation of aircraft there. The existing taxiway and apron are also set to be reconstructed as part of this project. Now, the reconstruction of those has been phased out as separate bid schedules, and that's just in the event that the amount of federal funding that's been allocated for this project runs short. So that's just kind of a contingency, so that at least for sure that if funds are available, a major portion of the project can get awarded. Now, Vicky also mentioned the electrical improvements that are set to take place as part of this project. A new electrical vault will be constructed, right now, the current system is just housed within a hangar there, which isn't ideal for maintenance and operation of the equipment. As part of the electrical improvements, the existing beacon, which is a towered facility, will also be replaced with a tip-down style. Essentially, it's a 25-foot tall pole with the beacon on top, which allows for ease of maintenance going forward in the future. I don't know if any of you are afraid of heights, but personally, I wouldn't wanna go out there 30 feet, flapping in the wind, and replace the beacon, so it's gonna be an ideal option moving forward. Some electrical improvements and enhancements, currently, the airport only allows for visual flying. What that means is there isn't a GPS approach where an aircraft can tie in and come in on either end. So what we're gonna be installing as part of this project is runway end identifier lights. Essentially, they just flash on the ends of the runways, so during evening operations, it's easier for a pilot to find the end of the runway. And then in conjunction with that are precision approach path indicators. What they are is they're in line with the angle with which a pilot is coming in at, and if you see red, that means you're coming in too low, you have the potential of hitting the pavement. If you see white, you're coming in too high, you're gonna miss the runway. So what they do is they provide a visual aid for pilots where you wanna see half-red, half-white, and that means you're coming in, you're gonna touchdown on the airport safely. So they're fairly common at a number of other airports across the estate, and it'll be a big enhancement for the airport here to have them. And then edge lights for the runway will get replaced with LEDs. There's the newer technology now, LEDs, the cost has come down quite significantly, and the cost savings for operation of them for years down the line was, is definitely an opportunity to take advantage of here. So kinda the schedule for the project is kind of located on the bottom here. What we're hopeful here is that, you know, we can get authorization to go out for bids for the project, to kinda see how the numbers come in. Proposed bid opening is on June 14th. We'll evaluate the bids, review them, make sure all the numbers match, and then the following day, the city council will bring to you a proposed low bidder to make award on. Now, award of this project is contingent upon the federal funding. For this project, you know, the $3 million of federal funding has been appropriated. Now, just 'cause it's appropriated with federal funds, it doesn't mean it's guaranteed, but with this funding being state, the state apportionment funding of federal dollars, the confidence level is pretty high that it will be there. So by the council awarding it on June 15th, contingent on federal funding, it means there's no liability on the City of Sauk Center in the event federal funding isn't there, you know, the bids are canceled and there's nothing lost, nothing gained on this particular project. So our expectation is that a federal grant would be received sometime in July. Considering how some of the years past have gone, it may slip into early August, which at that point, we'd have a discussion with whoever the low bidder is on the project, saying, can you get the construction completed before snow flies, or do we have to look at the option of constructing this project in 2016? And in the bidding documents for this project, there's provisions in place, so the contractor is aware that depending on when the funding is received, construction may have to take place in 2017. So with that, I'll open it up to the mayor and the council members, if any of you have any additional questions about the project.
Questions?
I have, I have one, I'm just kinda curious, do we have any records of how many takeoffs and landings we have there roughly in a year's time?
We do, as part of the master plan that was completed last year. Unfortunately, I do not have that information handy, I can provide it to Vicky tomorrow, and she can get that information to you, if that, if that will do.
I'm just curious if.
Yeah, that information is all compiled as part of a grand master plan agree, that was just completed last year.
Any other questions?
Do we still have empty hangers? Any chance these improvements would enhance the?
I would think so.
Any other questions? I had one, but you basically touched on it.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
It was the bids, bid process, you know, if we cancel all the bids because the FAA grant doesn't come through, basically, that's listed in that paperwork, the contractor.
Yeah, in the, in the project manual here. Now, the worst.
So they understand that they could, could be a year later and their bid has gotta reflect that?
Correct. Now, the worst-case scenario for this particular project is the FAA says there's no funding available at all. Now, in that event, you know, design services, there's already an agreement in place between, you know, Bolton and Mank and the City of Sauk Center. At that point, we would submit for a, for a grant for the design portion only and go out and rebid the project next year. Now, what we've been hearing from the FAA is that's unlikely that no construction will get awarded, but that's kinda the fail-safe scenario, so at least the city is not, you know, on the hook for the design services part of, portion of this project.
Okay. That's what I was wondering about, was we go through all the work and get the design and then pull the funding, and then we still end up paying the bill?
No, because the intent there would be to move forward again with the project next year. Now, financially, it makes the most sense for the city here, which is kinda the conversations that we had with Vicky in the previous year, to go forward with this project this year with the additional state funding that's available. So our hope is that, you know, the bids come in where we expect them to, and the FAA money is available.
Okay. Any other questions?
State funding could potentially dry up next year.
Correct.
That's why it's kinda, we do it now.
Okay. All right, no other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2016-37 Approving Plans and Authorizing Advertisement for Bids for Airport Improvement Project?
So moved.
Motion by Heidi. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any other comments or questions? Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Seven C, Approve Resolution 2016-38 Awarding Bid for Fire Tank or Purchase.
At the March 16th council meeting, the Council authorized the advertisement for bids for the replacement of the 1981 pumper truck. Because fire trucks are specialized purchase, in addition to advertisement for sealed bid, authorization was granted to pursue purchase through cooperative purchasing. The specifications were sent to various manufacturers, and three manufacturers presented totals for five bids through the cooperative purchasing contract with HGIC. Purchasing through them does have a $2,000 fee for the purchase price. I just want to let you know that ahead of time. The Fire Department Committee, which a couple of them are here tonight, they reviewed the specifications on the proposals and verified that the proposed vehicles meet the criteria presented. As recommended, the city proceed with custom fire for the Metro Star chassis. The total bid price was $426,406. The Finance Committee met just before the council meeting and have a recommendation on funding. There's a couple of things that have changed a little bit on that total price. Number one, if we pay at the time of order, we would receive a $13,175 discount, and also, we do have a small change order with receiver hitch system for $3,600. So we would subtract $13,175 and add $3,600 to that dollar amount. Of that dollar amount, the fire, the committee is recommending that through the Fire Department funds, we pay the $326,406, and we grant the Fire Department an interfund loan of $100,000 to be paid back over three years at a 2% interest rate. That kind of gives you how the funding part would work. All the other, the $326,000 is funds that are available in the Fire Department that the department has accumulated over the years. If John or one of you guys want to come up and talk about the truck that they have selected the custom fire with the Metro Star, and I did provide you, or he did provide you a picture of what it would look like, and kind of some of the specifications, if you have any questions on what this particular truck will do, they would be the ones to answer those questions.
Questions? Comments?
Vicki, on the total, if we're going to add the $2,000 for the purchase price, and then we pay it all at once, so we subtract, are we still going to go, is the resolution total still the $426, even though if we?
I will adjust that, I will adjust that bid amount for what the final amount will be. What I'll do is I'll take off the discount, and I'll add the change order to it, and adjust that $426,406 to that final number.
Okay, for the resolution.
For the resolution, yeah.
Okay, all right. I didn't want to make a resolution based on that, and then?
I would, I would, I would hope that you would present it and understand that I'm going to make that correction.
Is this the exact?
American knowledge, not the exact, but very similar, something made for a different city.
This is a little larger cab than what you have right now.
Correct.
So that should be easier getting in and out.
You said we get a $13,000 discount for paying upfront as opposed to paying on delivery?
We would pay, it's two pieces. When the chassis is delivered to have the pumper put on it, we would have to pay for the chassis then, and then we would pay on delivery for the balance. But if we pay the whole amount on order, we get the discount. And when we calculated out interest savings and that, it makes more sense to take the discount and pay for it upfront.
How long will it be for delivery?
10 months. Yep.
Basically, by us loaning them the $100,000, almost a year will be buying, they'll be paying them one year toward their loan before they see the truck.
You're right.
So. Any other questions? Comments?
It's not going to say Davenport Fire Department.
It'll say Sock Center.
Do you want two separate motions for the financing? Or you covered everything in one, but?
I covered it all in one, but I would like two separate resolutions. One, to accept the bid and authorize the purchase, and the second, to define the terms of the interfund loan.
Okay.
So it's Resolution 38 and 39.
Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2016-38 Awarding Bid for Fire Pumper Purchase to Custom Fire for $426,406 even? So moved. And a motion by Keith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Diane. Any other comments or questions?
Well, only that award amount is not exactly right, then.
It'll be adjusted for the discount and the change order.
Right.
All right, just making that clear.
Any other questions? Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Now, brings us to Resolution 2016-39. Do I have a motion to approve that resolution defining terms of interfund loan for purchase of fire pumper, which we will carry $100,000 for three years at 2%?
So moved.
Do I have a motion by Heidi? Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Dave.
Just to clarify, then, are we approving 39 in the pack, or 39A as we were given?
It'd be A.
Should be the A.
39 was $125,000 option we had. We selected the $100,000.
Okay. 2016-39A.
What I had, yeah, what we had discussed upstairs was the $100,000 at three years, 2%. Correct.
Which is part of the Resolution 2016-39A.
Yes.
Right. Good catch, Dave. I didn't see the A back there.
Yep. And they renamed it while you weren't looking.
Yeah, they did.
Any other questions or comments? Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Seven D, Approve Resolution 2016-39? Nope, we did that one already. Seven E, Approve Resolution 2016-40 Appointing Election Judges.
The city is responsible for conducting the 2016 primary and general elections on August 9th and November 8th. This includes appointment and training of election judges to conduct the election. The following individuals have agreed to take training and conduct elections on behalf of the city. Roxanne Baynan, Diane Basil, Diane O'Donnell-Borman, Wendy Drabney, Sandy Fredericks, Clarence Kane, Jaclyn Kirkoff, Melissa Kleinschmidt, Sarah Morton, Roberta Olson, Dolores Orth, Alice Peters, Marilyn Schwegman, Amy Trisco, Nicole Volt, and myself. The judges have been paid the hourly rate to be set by council. The prior rate is $9 for election judge and $9.50 for the head judge. So what we're asking tonight is to approve Resolution 2016-40 Appointing the 2016 Primary and General Election Judges.
Questions? Was the $9 for the election judges, that was what we've budgeted?
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Call the question. Do we have a motion to approve 2000, Resolution 2016-40 Appointing the Election Judges for the 2016 Primary and General Elections? So moved. And a motion by Keith. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Heidi. Any other questions or comments? Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Seven F, Approve Road Closure and Use of Sinclair Lewis Park for the tram ride.
Okay, the tram, which is the Ride Across America. The Sock Center Convention and Visitors Bureau and Chamber of Commerce are assisting and coordinating the tram ride. About 800 bicyclists participating in the tram will be passing through Sock Center on July 20th, will be spending the night in Sinclair Lewis Park and various other locations. The CVB and Chamber are requesting that the city approve closing Park Road between the Banshell Parking Lot and the Public Access Parking Lot to provide for an area for the support vehicles to park. In addition, they're requesting approval to utilize Sinclair Lewis Park and the Splashpad Park for the event. There will be tenters, many of them, maybe 300 to 400 tents, that will be scattered throughout all those areas for the people, and there'll be luggage trucks, and there'll be a shower and bathroom truck, and there'll be a lot of different things that'll be occurring down in that area. And that is why they're requesting that we close that portion of the road. So the action that I'm looking for tonight is to approve the closure of Park Road between the Banshell Parking Lot and the Public Access Parking Lot, and also approve the Sinclair Lewis Park and Splashpad Park for the event, which is they'll be arriving in the afternoon of July 20th, which is a Wednesday, and then they'll be leaving right away early the next morning. And they're looking for volunteers to help.
Yes. Questions? Comments? I think they've gone, the tram ride has come through here before.
It came here in 2004.
Okay. And I don't think there was any issues at that time. It was very well-run, and we would definitely welcome back to town. Do I have a motion to approve closure of Park Road between Banshell Parking Lot and Public Access Parking Lot, and also approve use of Sinclair Lewis Park and Splashpad Park for the event?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Diane. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any other questions or comments? Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Approve Resolution 2016-41 Authorizing Lot Split/Combinations.
Michael and Pam Borgman at 600 Main Street South have submitted an application for a lot split and recombination. This is the Main Street Coffee Building, and then their home directly to the north. These are two adjacent properties. They are plotted as lots one and two of Block 13, Robbins and Mendel's Edition. At one time, part of the coffee shop lot, the garage in the back, was subdivided off the coffee shop lot and added to the house lot, and now they are requesting it be put back to its original configuration. So really, the lots will go back to just being lot one and lot two. And I did include a certificate of survey. This reestablishes the original lot lines between the two parcels. And so what we're asking tonight is to approve Resolution 2016-41 Approving That Lot, That Minor Subdivision, that effectively reestablishes the lots to their original configuration.
Comments? Questions? I think they basically originally had split it because of, to separate business from personal?
I think it was purchased at different times, so I'm not quite sure what the original, why it was originally done that way.
And this is something, did Planning Commission look at this?
No, this is an administrative split. Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2016-41 Approving the Minor Subdivision?
So moved.
Motion by Heidi. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Questions? Comments? Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Seven H, Point Seasonal Employment.
The city traditionally kind of rehires a seasonal employee each summer, and they do watering, mowing, lots of those kinds of things. We are recommending by the Public Works Supervisor that Dennis Christensen be appointed to return as a seasonal employee. This will be his sixth season. The rate of pay is set by the union contract, which would be advancing to step seven. And so we're requesting we appoint Dennis Christensen as a seasonal employee with the city at step seven as the part-time seasonal pay scale.
Questions? Comments? Otherwise, I'll be looking for a motion to appoint Dennis Christensen as seasonal employee with the city at step seven of the part-time seasonal pay scale.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Diane. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Seven I, Authorized Development of RFP for Comp Plan Update.
The Planning Commission, at its regular meeting on May 10th, they recommended that the City Council begin the steps to update the comprehensive plan. The steps to go through, of course, would be developing the RFP, getting that approved and advertising, then interview and select a firm, then select a lead committee, conduct meetings, including public open house, draft a plan, review and revise it and adopt it. So it's a long, kind of a long-term process. But what the commission is doing right now is requesting that the City Council authorize the development of the RFP to select the consultant to assist with that. And that will outline the city's expectations in the development of the plan. So what we would do is begin the process of developing the RFP. It would go through the Planning Commission and ultimately the City Council to make sure everybody's on the same page as what our expectations are for the development of the plan before we even go out and advertise for that. So what we are asking tonight is just to approve the development of the request for proposals for the update of the comprehensive plan.
Questions? Comments?
Perhaps for our viewers at home, you could explain why we have a comp plan.
Comprehensive plan is a document that is written and drafted based on public input from the public of the city's vision, where we're going to go. We use that to make decisions for many years to come. It's going to outline, it'll have several chapters in it. There'll be, one thing that's going to be very important is we'll have a transportation chapter that I envision would talk very much about Highway 71. We can get a lot of that hashed out. Something that was very volatile earlier in the year was the outside storage of campers. Maybe we take a good look at what do we want our residential properties to look like as far as outside storage and that type of thing. We would look at lot sizes, or are lot sizes good to develop the kind of community we want to develop? And so all these kinds of policies get adopted, and then we develop our ordinance based on that. So it's our roadmap. It's how we make decisions to get to the next step. So this is, this is your base, big-picture view from above of what you want your city to be in the future. I guess that's kind of a very, in a nutshell, thing of what a comprehensive plan does.
It's basically for any, this is about, one of the prime-time situations for the public to have a lot of input on what they want the city to be like. And basically, if they don't give us any public input, it gets left to admin and this council, and they're going, they live with what we decided to guess, because they didn't tell us, so.
There'll be opportunity for public meetings, for people to come and address everything that they want. There'll be opportunities for them to, like, in a setting like this, to maybe vote on certain things that they want to see happen, where they want to see the city, what direction they want us to go. And then it's your job to take them there.
Right.
I think it's also, it's important to remember that the last comprehensive plan was published in 2000. Correct. If I'm correct. Then, there's been a lot of change in 16 years.
Right.
So, further better.
Do we have a motion to approve the development of the request for proposals for the update of the comprehensive plan? So moved. Do we have a motion by Keith? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Any other comments or questions? Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Seven J, Approve Resolution 2016-42 Declaring Intent to Pursue Condemnation of Properties.
This is actually in accordance with our existing comprehensive plan, is to keep the city in good repair. But in 2014, the city was successful in causing the removal of several vacant dilapidated homes that were classified as hazardous by the Hazardous Buildings Act. Several additional buildings are now under consideration for repair. The first step would be for the city to conduct inspections of the buildings to determine what level of disrepair they are in. The owners will be contacted in order to obtain access to the buildings. If access is not granted, the city would conduct exterior inspections. All persons with an ownership or mortgage interest will be notified. A report will then be filed regarding the condition of the buildings, and the city A report will then be filed regarding the condition of the buildings and the city will take formal action to declare the buildings hazardous if they meet that criteria after inspection and grant the property owner a period of time to bring the building to code or remove the building. If the owner brings the building to code, enforcement will cease. If the owner does not bring the building to code, the city can pursue a court order to raise the building or can pursue, or can pursue consent of the owner to raise the building. If the, if the city has granted consent, cost of removal can be spread over property taxes for five years. If we are not granted consent and we have to go through court order, they do not have that five-year option. So that's one, one thing, they try to get people to give consent, that we cover the cost of it and then they pay it over time. I have listed the five buildings currently under consideration. 200 North Ash Street, house and attached garage. This was on our prior, we were not able to conclude this one in the last round because of some mortgage issues, we want to give it another shot. 24 Ferry Lake Road, which is a house and a shed. 316 Birch Street South, which is a house and a detached garage. 729 High Street, which is a house and, and there is a detached garage at 529 Birch Street South. So these are the five properties. Feel free to drive by, take a look, see what you think. What we're looking tonight is just getting approval of the resolution declaring an intent to pursue the repair or raising of the buildings. I wanted to bring this before you, before we put much work into it, just to make sure that this is the direction the city wanted to go. Do you want us to do another round? These are the buildings we've selected and we are ready to do it if the council so wishes. So this is Resolution 2016-42 declaring our intent to pursue repair or raising of hazardous buildings.
Questions? Comments?
Did we, the ones that were identified earlier, have they all been taken down?
Yes. Well, no, the only one that hasn't is the first one on the list here.
Oh, okay, that's currently on the...
The other ones are gone.
Yeah. And basically, this list was longer, but a couple of the properties, according to Sarah this morning, have been sold.
We had a couple that have been sold and the people now, we've been in contact with them, that there's their intent to fix them up, make them nice, and so they know that they're on the list, so they're going to work hard to, to bring them up, bring them up to code in a short period of time. And that's what we really would like to see, is we don't want to tear down all the buildings in town, we just want them fixed up and looking good.
Right.
So...
And the first wave of buildings was rather successful, I think, and everybody in those neighborhoods was very happy, so...
Yeah.
Do we have a motion to approve Resolution 2016-42 declaring intent to pursue repair or raising of buildings?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Keith. Any other questions or comments? One thing, this is a long process, this is basically the first step.
Correct.
So, call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Unfinished business, project update on State Road.
Just have a little bit of updates on a couple of the projects. And State Road, this is the one that Matt is kind of overseeing, this is the mill and overlay. We do have a contract with, we have a contract signed and the notice to proceed has been granted to Mark Lee, who is the one that has the contract with that. The project is to occur after school recesses for the summer. There will be some minor grading and installation of curbing along the east side of the road prior to that, to the mill and overlay, so you'll kind of see that work happening. On Oak Street, the contract has been signed and the contracts, and the notice to proceed is, will be sent shortly. They are reviewing the submittals and they'll be scheduling a pre-con for Memorial Day week. So next week or the week after, we should be seeing a pre-construction meeting with the contractor for the Oak Street project and they can start with that as early as June 6th, but that date hasn't been for sure. That happens to be the same contractor that got the State Road contract, so we were expecting some kind of coordination with them with the paving. And the third one is the Belt Line and Center Street, you might have seen, they were down there milling off and getting the manholes raised and everything, they're getting ready to do that final lift on there to be installed. They said the next few weeks, but it could, could have happened today, I don't know, I wasn't down there this afternoon. They, we do have a punch list of items that has been prepared to address things such as pond drainage, the seeding, the striping, some of those types of things that need to be, that we weren't happy with necessarily, that they need to correct. So, and that's just a little bit of update for your information on our public works projects that's going on right now.
Comments? None? We don't have any new business? Then takes us on to our consent agenda. We have the schedule of claims, unpaid claims of $28,236.42, paid claims of $6,265 for a total of $34,501.42. April checks totaling $389,372.87. Every year by June 30th, we've got the liquor licenses that are up for renewal. The list in front of you, to date, the following applicants have the appropriate paperwork completed and the fee is paid. I will not forsake of time not read all those. Same thing, every year by June 30th, on-off sale 3-2 beer licenses are up for renewal. To date, all the applicants in front of you have the appropriate paperwork completed and the fee paid for those also. And the same with cigarette licenses, they are due at the same time and all the ones listed in front of you are, have the appropriate paperwork completed and the fee paid. We have a request from Lori Ron, DBA Palace Bar and Grill for a temporary extension of premise permit for a dance in back parking lot on June 25th, 2016 with live music from 8:30 to 12:30. We have requests from John Stefis representing the American Legion Post 67 for four temporary 3-2 on-sale beer license permits for the term of one day on July 16th for a beer in Bingo Garden at the Sinclair Lewis Park. Term of one day on July 20th, 2016 for the tram at the Sinclair Lewis Park. The term of five days from July 27th to 31st, 2016 for the Stearns County Fair. And a term of one day on September 10th, 2016 for the grilling and chilling at the Sinclair Lewis Park. We also have a request from John Stefis representing the American Legion Post 67 for one temporary extension of outdoor liquor permit for the term of one day on October 1st, 2016 for a 5K run and DJ music in their north parking lot from noon to 10:00 PM. Also, another request from John Stefis representing the American Legion Post 67 for a road closure of Park Road for a 5K run from the intersection of Oak and Park Road to the boat landing. And a request from Melanie Rearing, DBA M&amp;M's Corner Bar Incorporated for a temporary extension of premise permit for an outdoor event in back parking lot on June 18th, 2016 with live music from 8:30 PM to 12:30 AM. Any questions? Comments?
I just had one for the liquor license, the, the new restaurant on the corner, which we granted a liquor license to last meeting.
That, that was effective on July 1st, so that one doesn't have to renew.
On July, yeah, just so that...
We do not have the red carpet on here though, because we do not have their information yet.
Okay.
So everything else is on there though.
Will we have to handle that at a different time then or...
We'll have to handle it at a different time if and when we get the information.
Okay.
They have until when to submit it? If it's effective July 1st?
It's effective July 1st, so really we need to send it, we need to send it to the state by June 1st and so they're running close here, because we won't have another council meeting till in June.
And it's the turnaround time at the state level?
Yeah, the state wants 30 days.
They want 30 days, so... Any other questions or comments? Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
So moved.
A motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any other comments or questions? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Informational items, aquatic spray report.
This is the final spray report for the weed control on the lake and this is just from the, from the sprayer, they did it, just to verify, they did 27.84 acres, they did 17.65 acres in Channel 1 and 10.19 in Channel 2. And this is right north of the, the Causeway, I guess is what you would call it, there on the highway by the boat launch, there was a 300-foot wide by, by quite a distance length of a channel through there and then another one on the very north end of the lake and those are the only two spray areas that they had, which is what we had proposed, so. They are done for the year for the spraying for 2016, but now they'll be in front of you for a budget for 2017 very shortly, so that's all I have.
Questions on that item? None? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.